This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
Repeat, repeat the stuff you think?
Yep.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:06. As we don't have a quorum tonight, we will not be voting on anything at this meeting. We'll just do a review of things that we can discuss. And as we discussed over email, immediately following this end of this meeting, the executive committee will meet to address anything that needs to be handled before the next board meeting. So in particular, the question around mask policy. Okay. So I guess we don't formally adopt the agenda?
We're just here to talk.
Okay. So, so we're going to defer approval of the April board meeting minutes and the annual meeting minutes. We'll do that in our June meeting.
Just so you know, I think that normally we do the annual meeting minutes at the next annual meeting.
Oh, yeah. Melanie says she usually likes people to review them before that, before a whole year has gone by. So we at least informally like say, oh, yeah, there's.
I just want to say that the annual meeting is like seared into my mind. So whether I review the minutes now or in 11 months from now, I will remember.
Okay.
Scott. Who made a motion to close the meeting and who seconded it? If it's seared into your meeting, into your, your mind, could not remember.
I refuse, I refuse to be tested or interrogated in this manner. I'm not going to tell you until after I review the minutes and see if it jives with my seared or toasted recollection.
If you do, because I need to update that one thing on those minutes.
Okay, I'll make it up. Don't worry about it.
Okay. So moving on to the planning calendar, so we're into May. We'll make, we have a few updates to make to some of the May dates. So we know our meeting with Paul Mays, the architect, is going to shift. Is it confirmed for next Wednesday, Kim?
No, it's not, but I can confirm it. I'll actually send him a quick email right now.
Okay.
What time are we going to do that?
What's up?
What time will we do that?
I think I had six o'clock down. Does that work?
It could work.
The later the better for me.
I mean, I can make it seven. It doesn't, you know, either any time is fine for me. I think most people said the 26 works, so.
The 26 should be fine. I didn't say anything.
Yeah, the 26 anytime, whenever it's convenient for everyone is good for me.
Me too.
Okay. Great.
It does sound like better than our question.
And then, so we'll also need to defer the June meeting, electing our new board officers and talking about committee assignments. So everyone has one more month to get excited about what they want to commit to for the next year. Don't use this time to make up excuses as to why you can't be an officer or on a committee. Upcoming, I know Kim's going to give an update on the scholarship. Do we have a date that we actually pick the winner?
That we pick? No, I don't think we actually have a date. It's usually just when everyone's done reading the essays. So I'm actually going through and still like doing the whole redacting of their names and all that stuff so that no one knows who they are. Got some really good ones this year, so.
Great.
How many?
How many did we get?
You, let's see, we had one, two, three, four, five. Five completed ones, one person sent in one recommendation and that was it. So we had technically six, but five complete. So. And one of the, one of the kids is known by my husband and says, amazing person. And they're going to have a hard time figuring out who it should be. So it should be good.
And what do they get? $2,000 now? Do they get $2,000 now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, $2,000.
That'll make, that'll make a difference to somebody.
Absolutely. So I can, does everyone want to have the applications? Like, do you all want to do this? Or should I send it to only those who want to be a part of it?
I think I would send it only to those who want to be a part of it, just to not, you know, inundate people.
I'd like to see them.
On the other hand though.
Put them over.
I do. It was very, it was so fun the last time. It was really, I had a great time.
Yeah.
Okay, so Sarah. Did you want me to send it to you too?
Yeah, I think you should send it to everybody. If they don't want to read it, then they won't, but it's so effortless to do that maybe somebody wasn't planning to will actually get into it.
I will send it out and if you want to read it, great. If not, go for it. If you're going to pass it by.
Sounds good.
I hope to have them done tomorrow.
With voting on them though, do we need to be clear who's, who's voting?
Um, I don't think so. Usually it's just a quick, everybody just kind of sends in their vote on email who they want. If they just send it to me, that way no one's being influenced by other people's votes, so.
It's actually sort of an interesting question as to how you want to do this because we just did this at the Upper Hudson Board in connection with Day of the Year and Volunteer of the Year. And it was an interesting discussion where people sort of shared their views and then formed sort of a consensus. So it's a different way of doing it. I don't care. I just thought it was really interesting listening to people's perspectives. When we've done it, we've tended to all sort of have the same opinion, but you never know.
Well, I think that that's how it was done in previous years, but last year it was done online because of COVID. And I think if I remember correctly, the year before, everyone got together and was, you know, talked about it and figured out who they wanted it, you know, what they thought. So obviously that's up to you guys, how you want to, how you want to run it.
I thought that last year we did it just like this in one of the meetings because it was my first meeting and everybody had received the paperwork and we did talk about it. We didn't really so much provide our rationale, which I was kind of expecting that I would. So I was ready for, for our choice, but, but we didn't, it was a lit vote. I remember that. And I was new and I had a point of view, so that, you know, it was three against two, four against three, or whatever it was.
I forgot about that. You're right.
But Sarah's not bitter.
I think Sarah had the deciding vote.
That was.
I don't remember that meeting.
About, on the contrary. I felt very powerful.
Went right to your head, too.
Yeah.
Usually we give them the scholarship out like the second week in June. Or try to at least, so.
Were any of these kids actually going to school so we could do it at some kind of assembly? Or that's out of the question?
I don't think most, I don't think they're doing assemblies. I think most, most places are not allowing visitors into the buildings. So, and I, I'm not sure how they're doing graduations this year. I know graduation's outside, but I don't know if they're allowing only like a couple of people or how they're doing it. And we have, we have one from each district at least. I think we have two from Berlin, one from New Lebanon. Maybe it's three from Berlin, two, one from New Lebanon and one from April Park, so.
But next meeting is too late. They need to know before then.
I don't think they need to know, no. I mean, it's just a check that we're giving them. So it's not like it's gonna, I don't know that it would influence their, what they're doing for school.
So could we do it at the next board meeting? Just vote at the next board meeting?
It's up to you guys.
Who handed out the award last time? I don't think it was somebody from the board. I think it was somebody from whatever school it was, principal or something like that.
No. It was, I don't remember. Let me look at the calendar and see.
You just want to give out the big check?
I think we just gave out the check quickly last year. But I don't know that we even, if I can remember, I can't remember.
So our options are to either vote at the next board meeting with whatever board members want to participate or hold a separate meeting, virtual meeting with anyone who wants to participate or do it by email.
To me, it sounds like the most logical thing to do is have a date, a limit date for everybody sending his votes and just count whichever ones come in. That way that the kids can get it before the end of the school year because the money may make a difference into, in what they plan to do. It also may go into some kind of a transcript or something that they won such an award. So it might help them get into a school or something else.
That sounds fine.
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion either way.
So just email our pick to Kim?
No, I just said like the 10th of June.
Oh, have a.
Do I remember? Do I remember incorrectly or did we have some boy, I think there's a boy one last year came to the meeting? Or maybe that was two years ago. It couldn't have been last year. I didn't have meetings. And I think we gave him the, we, everybody cheered it for him and said a couple of words and stuff like that.
That was two years ago. More actually than I'm going to even be. That was three years ago, I think. Because that was the year, it was one of, it was Bernice Gowan's son won that year. And then the year, the next year, we'd had the Girl Scout who won. And then 2020, I'm just looking right now, it was Alyssa Lindheimer from April Park Schools won this year. And I, we did not get together with her. I think we just sent her a check because of COVID.
Okay, so Kim, why don't you email stuff out with the plan to vote by email with some dates in there? Both for the deadline for voting and a proposal for when we announce it.
Okay, so by email, did, did you say a date that you wanted to do it to have the votes in by?
I was thinking something like June 10th because that should be, no, a week or two before the end of the school year. I'm not sure when the school year ends, but somewhere in that range.
Okay. Okay. I'll send that out when I send everything else out tomorrow.
Thanks, Kim. Okay. Also, next on the calendar, I think this, we maybe had to push this off last meeting and I didn't update it. But the discussion about a potential book sale brunch in the spring.
Yeah, I was going to raise that again. Want to do that now?
Uh, we can do it during the fundraising committee report if you like. Whatever. Makes sense.
We can do it now. We can do it later. It makes a difference. Let's do it later.
Okay.
Build a crescendo.
Otherwise, upcoming on the calendar, I don't think too much else to, to touch on with this group. Summer camp plans are on here. We'll talk about that. You'll see, you see Rebecca's report. And then in July, just looking ahead, we have the director's six month check-in. So as we start talking about the admin committee, we just need to have that in mind so that we do, are prepared for that. I have one question. Just, do, when do we usually send the annual appeal?
It used to be that we sent it in April, but then for the past couple of years, we've been sending it in like October, I think, is when it's gone out.
Okay.
September, October.
Have we been happy with that?
It seems to work. I mean, I think that usually what happens is that you send it out in April. People say, oh yeah, I'm going to do that. And then you have to send them out reminders in the fall to say, hey, did you do it? So it was kind of like, well, let's just do it in the fall and have it done and over with, so.
On my sense was the fall worked better than.
I think having it close to when people are thinking about the end of the tax year is better because people just want to, you know, get those things in.
Right.
That's right. The end of the tax years seems to be sort of, definitely people start focusing on donations.
Although under the current tax laws for most people, for no particular reason.
It's historic or historical.
Yes, it's, 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 it's just that, yes. Muscle memory.
Anything else on the calendar before we move on to Kim's report? All right, let's go ahead and move on then. Kim, what would you like to highlight? Thank you for adding the charts and the trending information on the circulation activity.
Yeah, no, it definitely seems like it can kind of give you a bit of a better info, sense of what's actually happening. So that worked out well. I'll keep doing that. We'll just keep seeing what the numbers look like. I was actually going to start potentially reporting to you guys how many people we have coming into the building, but I don't know if that's a lot, if that's not something that you want to see. It could be something we can add. If not, no worries either. You saw all of the different programs that I have. The biggest ones right now is that we are doing a author visit with Ruth Horowitz with the Berlin Elementary School. And she's going to be doing a virtual author visit, which they've never, no one's ever done before. So hopefully it will go well. But she's all set and ready to go for, we figured out the date is the 26th? No, excuse me, the 25th of May. And it sounds like most of the, all of the teachers are going to be participating or all the different schools. So that's pretty exciting that we're actually having this, we're able to put, do this together, so.
Can I play, I could be a fight on the wall just, just because I know her and I'd love to see, see her drawing a thing?
Yeah, absolutely. I was actually going to put it out to the public too, to see if there's any homeschoolers who are interested in, in seeing it. I don't know that, it seems like the teachers will probably tell all of their kids what's going on. So I don't know how they'll figure all that out, but that's, that's where they're going. We are going, yes, definitely. Yeah, you can publicize it. I'll put it up on the website.
What groups does she target with her books? Just for elementary school kids?
Yes, yes, this is, this is, she's wrote a book called Saving Eli's Library. And it's about a book, it's about a library who went through a horrible storm and the river that's right next to the library flooded. And it's about how the kids and all of the community came together to save the library and what they did. And what's amazing actually is that I had contacted someone from a place called Magicians Without Borders, who was going to present last year for us. And they actually live in the town that had this happen. And he had told me about it out of the blue, that his daughter was one of those kids who was saving books out of the river or skim. So here we have this weird like 360 circle. And so he was just absolutely loved the thought that, you know, she wrote this book about it. So I told her and she thought, what a great coincidence. So it was very cool. It was just one of those things that was pretty neat, so.
Mother was actually librarian at Montclair High School, so.
Okay.
She's library focused in all ways.
Well, that's what she's going to talk about too at the presentation. It's not just going to be about her book. It's going to be about what is it like to be an author? And then also how important libraries are and, you know, so hopefully we'll draw some attention to the library with the kids. The only other thing that I have that's big is that I do have a summer reading kickoff party planned and that's going to be for Under the Tent with a storyteller. Her name is Mary Jo Maycheck. And she is the one who did a beautiful program with our teens and had them all enamored and completely just enthralled in what she was talking about. I was shocked and amazed. So she's a great storyteller. So she said she'll be willing to do it, you know, however we want to do it with in terms of COVID precautions and all that other stuff. This is going to be on June 26th. So it'll be after the next June board meeting. So we can at least talk about how things are going and what kind of precautions we want to do and where things are at by then. I was planning on doing a, trying to do a storytime under the tent with obviously people distanced. And so I'm planning on trying to start that in June. And we have the story walk installations are going to have to happen too. That's the other thing I wanted to just ask about is that I was thinking it would be great to put the one hour story walk in the area in the back where it's all kind of grown over, like plowing down a little, not plowing down, but cutting down a path that snakes through that area that kids could go walk through and read the stories as they go along. The only thing is, is that if we ever decide to do something back there, then we'd obviously have to probably take them out. But I just want to know if people would be okay with that if we were to just, you know, if I were to have my husband bring his lawnmower over and we can just cut a path quickly and, and put the story walk in there instead of putting it on the ground or around the edges of the property. So that was a thought at least. Does anyone have any thoughts about that?
I, I think you may find using your lawnmower pretty difficult on that stuff.
It's, it's possible.
It's a fine idea if it's, if you can do it.
The only thought that I had was that if we wanted to do some sort of random little nature preserve or nature walk, that might have an impact on it, if we were thinking of doing that.
I didn't even know that we owned that property until I got out the map, which I left from after the last meeting. So, I don't know, I was actually also thinking about asking, because Kirk Mitchell, they still do our lawns and everything and seeing if they wouldn't be willing to cut down a small, you know, winding path back there, if that might help.
Yeah, that would be a better idea than using your family lawnmower. Yeah, it's, it's going to be a little tough on it. There could probably be rocks and roots and all kinds of things in there.
I'm sure, yeah, yeah.
Is there, I think it's a good idea. Is there any like safety concern with that, that there's other, too much other, like, you know, poison ivy back there? Or is it like too many ticks or anything like that, that we'd be encouraging people to go where it'd be?
I don't think so. We're, we're encouraging people to go to the corkscrew and that's, I mean, tick season galore out there, so.
Poison ivy.
There are enough ticks everywhere.
Okay, well then I'll, I'll start getting that set up. And then our blood drive, just so everyone knows, we did have, we collected 25 units. It wasn't exactly as many as we had hoped. We had 38 appointments, but only 25 people showed up because of, I'm assuming it had to be the weather and just, you know, that time of year, so. But we do, they've been asked to do another two, one in August and one in December again. So I have word over to the fire department to see if we can do that.
I have one suggestion that, Kim, I have one suggestion about this blood drive. They should run later in the day because people work, you have a hard time getting there. I mean, I'd be happy to donate my blood, but I can't get there during the day.
Yeah, that's one of the things, I'm not sure if they want to do it later than that, but I will ask. Okay, sorry about that. Just so you all know, when you read the registered borrowers part of my report, our numbers decreased significantly in terms of registered patrons. And I just wanted you to know that it has nothing to do with the fact that, it's not like we actually just lost 233 people. It's all because of the pandemic and how we did things. We were making it so expired cards did not expire so that people didn't have to come to the library and renew their stuff. So we just stopped all of that. So it's been a huge wave of, you know, people's cards expiring because that's when we just said, let's stop this and people now have to renew. And we have been getting people calling in saying, hey, my library card doesn't work, which is fine. It's not a big deal. So just so you know that that's, that's why that is and because we're down by like a lot for our patrons.
Could we do outreach, like an email to the folks who have expired and let them know? And also, you know, use it as an opportunity to let them know that the library is open, blah, blah.
They get, they'll get, when their card expires, they get a notice that's automatically generated from Upper Hudson. So I would have to have them run the list and then send out a full email to everybody separately and say, so, I mean, I could. We could, we could try and do that. That actually might get some people back.
I think I got a notification that mine was about to expire. I don't think I got a notification that it did expire. So I'll come and renew.
How long do they last? Because I've had mine for 15 years and never gotten a renewal notice.
It's supposed to only be there for three years before we have to renew them. But sometimes people will mistakenly put the number up at like 10 years or 20 years and not, and not know, so.
Okay. Maybe I was in the lifetime membership.
I can check for you and let you know.
How's it going with the town cleanup tickets?
Um, it's going. It's extremely busy. We had over 17 people on, here in the library on Wednesday. And, you know, some people are irritated because they have to pick a day. And they don't know that they have to pick a day. And then when they find out that on Saturday, they have to pick a time and get irritated because they have to pick a time. And, but for the most part, everything's going fine. It's just been busy. Except for that whole like, oh, I have to pick a day, uh, you know, I think.
Maybe we need to sign, we don't make the rules.
Exactly. Actually, most people have been really good about that. I think that when they do find that out and we're like, you know, or our staff say, it's not our fault. We just are, this is how it's set up. Like, oh, we know it's not your fault. We know, we know. So we haven't had any real big issues yet with anybody coming in and being angry at us, so that's been a plus. Just wanted to, so, and we have been getting busier. People are now coming in and enjoying being able to come in. I don't think anyone's really using curbside service anymore, but we still have it available for those who want to. Let's see, story walk, good. Palmaze, good. Scholarships, good. I did attend a webinar called Designing for the Future, the Post-Pandemic Library. And what was good about that was that everything that Paul and I talked about in terms of what we need to be doing for the library now, it was, went over, they went over in that, that seminar. So I feel like we're on good, we're on a good path to making sure that everything's working out. You've got that, the tents up. The new museum passes that we have, Chesterwood, the USS Slater, Berkshire Botanical Gardens, and then the Adirondack Experience are all set and ready to go. So if anyone wants to take those out. I have been trying to work. I have been working now from the office instead of working from home. So hopefully that is, it's going great for me. So that's, that's working. And I don't know.
Coverage working now is.
We still have, it's just the, the four of us will all, we're still rotating. So it's just basically one person, one, you have one Saturday a month and everyone seems to be on fine with it, so. You know, I've been thinking at some point we might want to add one more staff member, but for right now, everything seems to be going pretty smoothly and everyone's able to fill in for each other when we need to, so, so far, so good. So I think we're going to keep it where it is for now. Just because I don't know if a lot of people are going to want to be going back with COVID and, you know, who's knows with all that stuff. And then you'll see at the bottom of the page, we have the, our new, another piece of history that has been framed and preserved for us. This was actually a very crumpled piece of paper that we found, that was found in the walls during a renovation project. And it is now, it's, obviously there's a lot that's missing, but it's very interesting. So I would suggest coming over and taking a. So I would suggest coming over and taking a look at it. I just have to find a place for it now. That's going to be the hard part. And the only other thing that I did not have on my report is that I met with a man named Gary Schwartz over Zoom. He is with the Hearing Loss Association and we are going to work together on trying to get more, figuring out how to make the library more accessible to those who need special equipment or just making sure that we're accessible to all different types of handicap accessible, accessibility. So not just like, you know, and we do have some stuff for visually impaired, but we don't really have anything for those for hearing impaired. Talked about some equipment we can get. And if we do end up doing a new, uh, doing the expansion, there is something called a hearing loop that people who are deaf or hard of hearing can then connect to while we have programs, but it's a very big project. Apparently if you, the only one time you want to put that into place is if you're doing some kind of a big project of reconstruction or renovation. But we're going to, we're just, you know, he's going to come up with programs as well to try and, you know, about hearing awareness and how to keep your ears healthy, especially for children. And it was a great meeting and it was really good to be able to talk with him about it. So we're going to, you know, work together for, on some stuff.
Did Paul have any opinions on that?
I didn't even talk to Paul about that part because I hadn't met with Gary yet. So I didn't really know what I was, you know, what to think about all of it. So I'll bring it up with him though.
And, and Gary attended the Battle of Britain and that was sort of how it came up because he had requested closed captioning for that. So it was a good connection that, you know, able to make a positive out of a slightly negative thing that happened. So thank you, Kim, for talking to him.
Yeah, and actually what we're going to do is we're going to start meeting through Zoom because they allow for closed captioning. Whereas I'm, I'm not sure if GoToMeeting does, I'm sure they might somewhere, but it doesn't seem like it. So we'll start meeting through Zoom and have closed captionings for anybody who needs it. And that way we can make sure we're accessible that way. So next month's meeting will be through Zoom.
Great.
Okay, I think that's pretty much it for my, my stuff.
I have a quick question on the tent. I know you are starting with some programs under the tent. Are we thinking about resuming some of the activities like the mahjong or knitting club or anything like that under the tent at this point?
I was going to suggest opening it up and saying if people, you know, contacting all of them and seeing if they want to try it again or meeting outside on the deck if the mahjong group was interested. Mahjong, I entered the knitting club, we didn't really, that wasn't like my program. It was more of a community group that just used our building. The mahjong group was like, yes, we would love extra new players. So please advertise, let them know. So I can definitely get in touch with Isabel and some other of the ladies who, if that's something that's okay with everybody. I mean, with COVID and all that other stuff, I guess it's now a, we have to come up with the policies of what we want to, where do we want to do things? Do, are we going to ask people to wear masks outside? Are we not? You know, it's going to be a challenge trying to figure out which way we want to go with things, so.
And what about outside groups? I can't remember now and I didn't have time after semi remembered this to try to figure out where I heard this. Did somebody, did Rebecca, did somebody ask about Girl Scouts using it?
Yep, it was the Girl Scouts. And actually that was one of the things I was going to bring up. They want to use the, the tent as a place to meet, to do kind of like an end of the year ceremony where each Girl Scout troop sets a table to show up what, show off what they did over the years. And there might be a bridging ceremony, but it's really just basically a recognition ceremony of, you know, how things went for the year. And they want to do it on June 18th at six o'clock so the library would not be open. They know that there won't be no bathrooms available. They said they could bring their own tables if they wanted to, or if they want, if we wanted them to. And they were going to possibly bring some snacks. She did say, when we asked how many people, she said, I can't see us having more than 100. So she also then said, you know, if that's too many, we can definitely make it so that, you know, each family can only bring two people or however many you want. She's like, I, I can't see us having that many. I just like, I don't even know if we'll have half of that. But again, we would have to, have to figure that part out. So they want to know if they can use it. I was going to bring that up later, but yeah.
Okay.
We will decide on that.
When we talk about the whole COVID policy, we'll address those things as well. But, okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else on the director's report? More questions?
I asked Melanie, but didn't see a response. The, when we got the grant money, Kim, is it in the checking account or is it in the?
It went straight into the check.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, she just responded, it's in the checking is what she said.
Okay, thanks. That will make it easy. Checking.
So anything else on the treasurer's report? Melanie provided sort of the projection that we're on for the year with some anticipated cushion.
It looks like we're in really good shape.
Say that again, Sarah?
Looks like we're in very good shape, I said.
It does. Seems to me that given we have a lot of unknowns right now with things, projects we might do and the, you know, especially some of the things around the building and stuff like that, that it would be, you know, good to just leave it as cushion for now until we see how we might be moving forward, you know, in the second half of the year. That's good to know we have that.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the treasurer's report? Questions to send back to Melanie?
I really liked Melanie's format. I thought it was a very accessible document.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is should I still be sending out the profit and loss statements and the budget state, you know, the, are you guys interested or wanting to even look at that or is it a waste of time?
From my perspective, I think it's a waste of time. I'm more interested in just sort of like, what's the money coming in? What's the money coming out? What's the budget projection and where do we stand? We actually discuss sort of the major expenses. So sort of you got a sense of what's going on in any event. So I don't find it particularly useful.
So it's not a waste of time, but just a waste of time for us.
No, it's not a waste of time.
If you share it with Melanie that, and she, and she incorporates it into the treasurer's report, the stuff that matters, then that's cool. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if people find it useful, people are sending it around. I was just speaking for myself.
No, I agree.
It usually seems like no one really looked at it anyway. So that's kind of why I was asking. So if Melanie, because Melanie's report was great. I thought it was really good to see it broken down the way she had it. So I will only send it to her and if anyone else really wants me to, I'll send it to them too. Or I can just continue sending it to you, Jen. And then if people want to look at it through the Google Doc, then they can. If not, then they don't have to. So, because it still needs to be done for our own, for other stuff that I have to do.
I think that's a really great way to do it. You post it on the, the shared drive and then if you're interested, you can look at it.
Sounds good. Good point.
Perfect.
All righty, so moving on, Rand and Marketing Committee.
Okay, well, as everybody knows, we received our grant money, so that's great. And I think everyone also knows that all of the potential partners that we had lined up for the survey ultimately agreed to move forward. Very happy about that. One thing that we had talked about and sort of changed after talking with the vendors is that we're going to allow multiple people per household, but trying to not have multiple repeats for a person in this mechanism to win money. So that means that we'll be able to input that.
Sarah, you're fading in and out. You're fading in and out.
Oh.
Could you put yourself on mute? I think we're getting feedback from, it sounds like car noise. I think that's interfering with Sarah.
Sorry, I guess if I can figure out how to do that.
I might be able to do it. I, I can mute you, I can mute you. Just it.
Okay.
Okay. That's fine for Sarah.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, how far did you, what, what, well, I think what I was trying to say is that we will be able to use the computer at the library to input survey responses. So either people can do their own that way, or if they do paper versions, one of us can input the paper version and that way we don't have to send them and it will save us time. So we just have to make sure we do it right. So that's, that's sort of a change. The Facebook page announcing the survey is already live, that, that it will be happening. And we're planning to distribute flyers during cleanup day that Jen designed, and I believe they were attached and in this folder.
They are being sent out.
Great, okay. Survey pressing is finalized and the programming is underway. Scott, did you receive my email with the, with the survey link?
I'm sorry, I can't hear between the squirrels and the dogs and the hummingbirds. I just can't hear anything. Uh, yes, I did receive the link.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure you guys received it. And on here, I'm saying we need results by the 21st, your feedback, but we're going for Sunday because I got it to you late because Jen and I were going back and forth on what we, we saw and trying to make improvements before you got it. So you have till Sunday.
Oh, that's right. Sunday was, was, was in my mind, so.
Yeah, which is, I think, the 23rd, but, but, yeah, yeah. So that's great.
I'm good. I'll, I'll do that before then.
Okay. We sent around also, and it's in this Google Drive, a press release just letting people know that the survey is happening. And we plan to do another press release once the results are in and we have a report that would be much more detailed about what we learned and things like that. But wanted to make sure you're all more or less okay with the press release. If you read it.
Looks good. I'm just reading it now.
Silence and acceptance. It's approval.
I think it sounds good.
Good, okay. On tweet, moving off of, of the survey, on the tween research, I was wondering if maybe since we, we never got any sort of email version out, if we could actually maybe do a paper version at camp for the kids that are that age group or aren't there enough of them?
I don't know that there will be enough of them. We haven't gotten any, we've only gotten one application for a volunteer and I don't know how many sixth graders will be, because you have to, the oldest you can be is just having finished sixth grade. So there's nothing for seventh graders.
I still haven't gotten any list of email addresses, so that, that kind of needs to be done. Oh, on the speaker series, I think, I think we mentioned last, last time that, that there was a lot of enthusiasm around the Battle of Britain and we did a survey, which I wrote a report for and sent out. It's not actually in the folder. I guess I didn't, I didn't attach it when I intended to. I know most of us have seen it. I'm not sure everybody saw it, so I will send it. If you did, did you ever see the report on the researcher Battle of Britain, Scott? You did? Okay, good. So the thing, the things that were the most appealing to people in terms of new subjects were local upstate New York history was by far the most interesting to people with 93% being very interested. So if, if you're looking for topics, Kim, to, to focus on, that would probably be your best bet for the next one. And then US constitutional history, Dutch New York and immigration through the centuries and the Civil War were all very appealing to people. Not, not as much so, but you know, those are all interesting too.
Yeah, I've been looking through all of that and trying to figure out where to go next. I have an email into somebody who says she would definitely be interested in it, but she's not, she does more, I think constitutional history and things like that. But the problem I'm finding right now is with, when I'm trying to get in touch with like National Park Services, a lot of times we'll have people who do, you know, seminars or, or presentations. Most places are not having anything at this point, so it's been kind of tough to find stuff. But I am working on it and trying to figure out where we can get some information. So just so you know, it is, I am, have been looking at it, trying to figure out another way to get more people or to get this happening.
Does, does, in the last one, have any subject matter expertise in any of these? I mean, I don't know if we want to use them again, but.
I emailed him recently and I have not heard back from him. So I don't know if they are home or, I know he said he wanted to travel when he was done with it. So they might not be around, but I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, cool. Let's see, that's other, I think, nothing. We, we still need a veterans liaison and that's something we need to think about who, who might be the good opportunity or option for that. On the logo update, Robin sourced three graphic artists for us to consider and we made the decision to go with Abby. It's costing us $600. The brand committee met on May 11th to complete a questionnaire that Abby had sent around to us around what the library's brand character is, sort of what, what our preferences were, what we wanted to shy away from, what we wanted to present to the world, what, what, in what ways we might be misunderstood. And it was kind of an interesting exercise and fun. And we got that back to Abby and we are waiting to see what, what design she comes back with. Don't have a timeline on that yet and we're waiting for Robin on that timeline, but we're moving along on that. So the only things that need attention are, are the feedback from the survey link testers, which we already talked about. We need to get finalization of the link detail to the postcard, which will happen as soon as the link is finalized. Press release draft, sounds like everybody's okay with it. Second lecture series, we already talked about. Email list for tweens and logo concept approval, which the, the brand and marketing committee will come back with a preferred logo and look for board approval on that. That's it for me.
Thanks, Sarah.
I'm going to unmute Ed just so that in case he is interested. Ed, you're unmuted. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, I've been yelling into this thing. I didn't realize it was muted.
Oh, sorry.
Questions and stuff.
Oh, shoot. I'm so sorry. No, I put it on mute.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
So go ahead.
Like I sort of forgot because they were timely for the moment we were doing things. Anyhow, now I get my chance. So, am I up now or I don't know?
You are, yep. So strategic planning.
Okay, well, as I said, I don't really have any report, but I do have a bunch of questions. I know that I, I spoke with Jennifer and then Scott was going to talk to her and I don't know what happened. So I guess the first question is, what happened?
Start with, with what?
Are you muted now, muted now, Scott?
No, I'm, I'm unmuted.
Okay. So what happened with Jennifer Lavinia?
Okay, when, when last we spoke, I told you I spoke to her. I spoke to Brian. Brian was going to pull his file. Kim sent me what we had. When Brian gets back to me, I'll give him what I have. And I left a message on Jennifer's tape that we hadn't forgotten her, that I reached out to Brian, that he was pulling his file. And when we begin to figure out what the paperwork is, we'll speak to her again.
Okay, so nothing's happening in a hurry. All right. It's not an emergency anyway, since we haven't got a need to buy, to own it yet. But you did, the, the impression I got was she was much more interested in trading. But you did, the, the impression I got was she was much more interested in trading for the land behind her house than for getting paid. Her big interest was avoiding any complications in the refinancing of her house. And so.
Yeah, and that, that's my, I agree. My discussion with Brian was sort of amusing. When I suggested that this wasn't complicated but was complex. He basically said, oh no, this is very complex. And then we sort of discussed this a bit, and it turns out it's, it's complicated, but it's not complex. It's, what we need to do is very simple. But since there are potentially two banks involved, couple of different mortgages, it's just, you need people who are interested to do it and suffer through it. And my concern is that Jennifer is not someone who's interested in that. So it's gonna be challenging to age her through this because, you know, it sort of depends on what the banks are viewing the transaction. Not hard, people can do it. They do it all the time. It's just a question that it's not, it's not simple.
Well, it was one, uh, other part to my discussion with her the first time. And that is that she had a definite interest in finding out more about the board and perhaps joining. Perhaps if we had her join the board, or not immediately, but you know, discuss it with her, have her come to meetings. I don't think would be nearly as effective if they were, um, on Zoom or something, start having it live. That may be a way of getting her just sort of in the milieu and to get some momentum. And so that might be a different strategy, since we don't have any specific plan yet. We need to do something.
Would we end up with any sort of conflict if we were still trying to purchase the property while she was a board member?
I mean, I'm sure some lawyer could come up with a problem, but I think as a group, all we're talking about is trading something that doesn't, isn't much, worth much of anything to us, for somebody who doesn't think what she's trading is worth anything to her. And so I doubt it's going to be a big issue. Seems like a small town kind of thing where two people shake hands and they do it.
Does she bring anything to the party and the, that's interesting for, for the board?
Well, she seemed like a very nice person. She's a nurse who has spent most of COVID, uh, working in a, I already call it senior center, not senior center, but a long-term care facility. As, as what she calls herself as a COVID nurse. She has managed to buy every one of her past houses right next door to collaborate.
I think we lost him.
I think we lost you. Ed, we, we can't hear you anymore, so we'll move on until you are able to rejoin us. Okay, uh, so next would be fundraising.
You're muted.
Now you're frozen. You know what? It's exactly eight o'clock. It's trying to tell us.
Oh, boy. Scott, you're completely frozen. We can't hear or see. Oh, no, he was.
And there were three.
I'm sure he's coming back. He's probably just signing off and I'm gonna try to come back on again, since he's up. He's on deck.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me? Did you, I don't know when I faded away.
Okay, yep, you faded away. Scott froze up. He's rejoining, but.
Oh, okay. There's been a high attrition rate here in the last 20 minutes. Okay, anyhow, I, I, I don't know how much you heard, but the sum total is, I think she would be an asset to the board. And so I, I would love, you know, as everybody knows, I'm all in favor of getting us back into having regular meetings. And I think that would be a way of getting her more interested too. It's pretty hard to entice people with a Zoom meeting. Am I still there?
Yep, you're here. Sorry, we got, Scott is rejoining, so. We are back to everybody.
It must be those hummingbirds interfering with his signal.
I think there's, I mean,
Butterflies.
But I think there's some advantages to the Zoom meeting as well for people who travel a lot, or like Robin, who, um, you know, is, is often working from other locations. She can still do this. So, you know, it cuts both ways, I guess.
Well, eventually open meeting laws is not going to allow it at some point, I'm sure, because they just keep fixing the law. So technically, when someone's virtual, they're not supposed to be allowed to vote. So at least when in-person meetings are happening. So I don't know what that's gonna, where that's gonna go to.
Great. Yep, yeah. That's so good. We can make it a mixed bag. I'm not saying we shouldn't have the ability to be remote, but just start thinking about the fact that if we're trying to attract people and make it more fun for them, it's a lot easier to have them actually physically near each other. And you just generate more momentum or relationship. The other part was, I don't really know what happened with Paul. Did, did you guys go over the fact that he had, uh, the option of doing something about the back plan? Because I told him about it, but I don't know how much that sank in before he actually came to the library.
But he had the option to do what? Sorry.
To use that untamed land in the back.
Yeah, he knew that. He, he knew that. We, we talked about the potential for, um, adding a, doing some kind of a, um, structure for, an outdoor structure that would be, you know, like a, um, pavilion or something. He had the idea of making the deck into some kind of a stage that we could have, uh, you know, performances on. He's, he, he's got a lot of ideas. Um, so I'm interested to see what he comes up with. Um, but yeah, we told him.
I was gonna say, Kim provided the, um, the, uh, can't think of the word, the plans, you know, the, um.
Blueprint?
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, blueprint. Uh, so everything we had in terms of the current building, the land, um, and talked through the various ideas we've had that both within the current building and expanding the building and looking at, you know, uh, other ideas of like the other structures like Kim mentioned. So we kind of gave him the full profile of all of the different types of things we've talked about. In addition to running down the list of, you know, where, what are the top needs that we have right now? What are the concerns? You know, what are the things that sort of the most immediate things? So I think part of what he'll present is the different ways that we could work with him, uh, in terms of, what does he call it? A master plan?
Master plan, yeah.
That, that gives us and, um, both a picture, a picture of the current state, systems, building, you know, the things we need to think about in the five years, 10 years, that kind of span. As well as thinking about a phased approach to things. So things that we would consider doing, you know, without expanding, things that we would consider doing expanding, and even, you know, if we engage with him, that they're able to do things like plot out how you manage a project like that, so that you're not impacting or you're minimally impacting operations, you know, while things are happening. So they really seem to have, I mean, they do this.
Am I still there?
Yeah.
Okay, um, one thing we have to keep in mind is that we were trying to get something together that would be a solid offering from the library to present to the town, so we could get some of the money that they're getting from Congress.
So we have an update on that, Ed.
Okay.
Which is, it, it, yeah, it no longer looks like the, uh, free money. You know, pot of gold at the end of the rainbow as it initially presented. Each time we've talked to the boards, that first meeting, it has gotten a little less promising. Um, and basically at the town board meeting, this, was it this week? That they said that they've actually now received the documentation around this. And unlike what they were told in the in-person meeting, which was, it was kind of a free for all. Now it's very COVID-specific, um, and it's, it's, there's a lot of guidelines and a lot of, um, criteria that you have to meet for projects. So I think they're still talking about stuff, but strong impression, Kim, jump in if you disagree, but this is really only going to now be for like COVID-related expenses. So things like additional costs for summer camp might be covered under it, things like that. But that this was no longer a, you know, bring us, bring us a wish list and we'll see what we can do. So it's kind of disappointing, but I guess not shocking at the end of the day. Too good to be true and all that.
Not to worry, we'll just wait for the new infrastructure bill.
Nope, and we lost Ed. Okay. All right. Well, while, we'll see if Ed comes back. In the meantime, shall we move on to fundraising?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm now unmuted and I'm ready to go. I'm all fired up. We're talking about doing a function coming over in the springtime, while the springtime is quickly moving into the summer. But in connection with the reopening of New York State and the reopening of the Stevenson Library, what I'm thinking that we might want to entertain is doing something in July sometime involving picnic outdoors, a little book sale. Maybe we'll bake pies and have pies and ice cream. And, you know, work that into some sort of fundraiser involving sort of a reassembling of the community and moving forward with our lives. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Um, are we thinking of, so with the book sale, we always have some challenges with that. Including, including summer camp being July, so.
I might not do the book sale along with it. I think the only people who've been asking to do the book sale are those who want to give us their books and not buy.
Yeah.
And now it's become.
I have a solution for that. For everyone who donates a book, they've got to buy three.
Yeah, I think that, as much as I hate it, as long as we do some kind of a, something to replace the book sale, I think we don't make enough money off of it to even, like all the work that Jody does on it, you know, we're technically, it, it's just, we were losing money doing it. So as much as I hate saying that, I, I think that, um, we just can't. We don't have the space. We don't have the finances. And if we want to do some kind of a fundraiser, let's just do it as something fun for the community, but not, not do the books if we can't, if we don't have to.
I had an idea and you all probably think.
I was thinking more just having it.
I had an idea that everyone's gonna think.
I said, I was just thinking.
Oh, God.
Go ahead. I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna talk. You, go ahead.
It's your turn, Scott. You go. I'll tell you later.
Please.
Oh, no, he's freezing.
Actually, all I.
Ed might have a point about meeting in person.
Lord.
Oh, he's back.
He's back.
All right, go, Scott.
Back. I can't see anything. Um, all I was saying, from the book sale standpoint, all I was thinking of was a table with some books on it, but more than that, doesn't make a difference. I just think something outside, something with food, um, maybe some kids activities, um, you know, whatever we think's manageable, but those are sort of the major components. Food, kids, outside, weekend.
So two, two questions I have is with July and camp and the community room and camp and everything else with camp. Is July the ideal timing? Follow-up being, there is the plan or it's being worked out about the fire department having a car show, maybe having Four Fat Fowl do something in August. Would we think that that would tie in better with that?
I think in terms of camp, I don't know that it would be a huge deal, seeing as how, um, if it's on a Saturday, you know, or Sunday, I don't think it would be that. We'd also have the tents, the extra tents for people. That might be a good thing. But if we don't use anything inside, I don't think that would be a big deal. But if we wanted to try and make it so that it's one weekend of stuff, that might be not a bad idea too.
Can I put forth my idea?
Oh.
I was thinking, and maybe this might be better in relation to.
I'm having trouble. Well, here.
This is an official meeting? Are we gonna just keep doing?
Pretty interesting. That is my idea.
What was your idea?
I thought it would be a really cool idea to have a softball game and have people from the different organizations. I mean, not everybody's gonna want to play softball, I'm sure, but some people probably would. And if, if there were just a few from each of the organizations, it would be something that people would probably like to watch. It would be fun. And, and we have that day be something that, you know, you know, you pay to come watch it or participate and eat the food and this and that.
That's a fun idea.
Library versus the fire department. Which are you guys gonna choose?
I choose the library.
The Four Fat Fowl just destroyed the fire department in the two, uh, games we played with them, softball and then dodgeball.
So this is something you actually did before.
Oh, cool. Just, just the fire department and Four Fat Fowl. It was just a, like a reach out thing, but it was, it was fun and they were really game for it. They really enjoyed it.
That's cool.
Fowl or the fire department or both were really game?
Both, but Four Fat Fowl's very, you know, into, into it, so. But they're good, so we might want to like team up against the seniors or something, just so we.
Or, you know, we, it wouldn't necessarily have to be the library against the fire department. It could be representatives from each of the organizations make up a team, so that we're, we're breaking down those barriers.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's kind of a fun idea.
I like that.
Oh, all right, Scott.
Doesn't look like he has audio, though.
Can you hear, Scott?
It says you're not connected to audio. Don't know what that means. There we are.
What did I miss?
There you are.
Um, I was just saying that I thought it would be really cool of a, um, at the same time that we do the fundraiser, that we have a softball game and maybe instead of having it be like the library against one of the organizations that we have members. and maybe instead of having it be like the library against one of the organizations, that we have members of each organization on each team so that it's a, uh, what would the word be?
Community togetherness.
Yeah. Breaking down the barriers, getting to know each other, play each other, and you know, just people that want to play, obviously. If you don't want to play, we're not gonna drag you out there.
So I gather you're proposing beer softball in a round robin setting where we sell the beer? Us against the seniors and us against the veterans and us against the historical societies. Is that what you have in mind? I think it's a great idea and we're gonna win.
I think it'd be really fun.
And we could tie it into having something like selling pie and ice cream and some refreshments and things like that. Um.
And actually, we can do a parimutual betting thing as well.
Yeah.
And it's a nice tie-in with.
I like.
Work with these groups on the survey, you know, like say, here, let's do something together.
I think so.
I like it.
Um, I don't know what kind of enthusiasm you might get from some of the other organizations, but I think it's a great idea.
Can't hurt to try.
That the Four Fat Fowl people are all hot for softball.
Well, actually, we should get Willie's pen together and they can play during uh, for the seventh inning stretch.
Very good idea.
Um.
Right.
Okay, so let's.
I guess the first thing is, when do you want to do it? Regardless of whatever, you want to do it in August sometime? Is this community thing really gonna happen?
I think the car show is moving forward. I don't know if they've gotten confirmation that Four Fat Fowl is gonna try to do an open house at the same time, but I think they're planning the car show, which was, but that might not be good timing to do something like this. This might be something better to do earlier as a separate kind of thing. Um, and then see if we do something else during that weekend. Uh, August 14th is when they're planning the car show weekend.
Yeah, the only reason I was thinking sooner is better than later, not that I have a strong preference, is just the concept of the reopening. Like things are beginning to start again, and I think capturing the enthusiasm, enthusiasm of that would be beneficial.
Could we do something? Do you think we would be able to pull something off like in, in late June that would be like music under the tent with the bake sale or refreshments or things like that?
I have the animals set up for the Saturday, so the 26th of June. Um, so I mean, we could make that a day. Oh, it's not, it's the um, the storyteller. It's a summer reading kickoff.
You know, we're sort of close enough to concept in terms of beginning to get people to bake and I think I think that's enough time. I mean, I think we can do it.
And what about music, though? Do you think that would be something we would be able to incorporate? People seem to like the couple times we've had music programs.
I could see if we could get um, the Celtic music guy to come back. I know everybody loved him. He was definitely wanting to come back at some point. Or we could try someone new. I just don't know a lot of the bands around town, so I'd have to do some research.
Are there bands around?
I haven't, that's what I don't know. Apparently Willie's got a band, but I didn't know that either.
He does, definitely. And doesn't Kim, Kim have, not, does Kim, doesn't Kim?
Kim has, has, yep.
Is, uh, yeah, in a band, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Couple of them, yeah.
Let's take a look at the calendar. Where's the calendar? So you guys were talking about like the weekend of the Father's Day, 26th, 27th, that's, is that what we're talking about?
Oh, you know what the only thing is, is that I just realized the weekend of the 26th, 27th is probably graduation time. So we might end up running into graduation parties and um, let me just look and see what everyone has for graduation this year.
I'm back. Did you? I, I heard Jen that you were saying something about the town and about whether they would give us money or not, and if they did, it had to be based on COVID.
Yes, sorry. So it's no more free for all, free money uh, as it was initially presented to them and back to us. It sounds like this is going to be a lot more strict now. They've received written guidelines um, that they're reviewing. And it sounds like all of it is going to be um based on COVID and/or any sort of like emergency preparedness related to.
So for this, it might be the AC system upgrade.
Possibly, but I, it, it sounds like it's really gonna be limited. I, I.
Well, one thing that.
Beyond any like excess costs for camp, things like that.
Well, the, the uh, part of the discussion that Kim said she had with Paul was the idea of what could be done after um, COVID. And this could be preparation for COVID and for subsequent potential problems. Um, maybe that's how we should approach trying to get the funds. No, because this master plan will have pieces in it. And maybe we can just do first piece being something to do with COVID and disease preparation, like getting better uh ventilation in the building or improving infiltration.
Can you get the criteria from the town?
What did you say, Scott?
Do you want to know if you can get better, get some kind of criteria from the uh, town? But there's certainly plenty of things we could do with the building that would be an improvement and uh, and protect people against COVID.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we can absolutely continue to plan that way. It just sounds like this is a lot more of what the name implies, like the recovery plan, that this is like recovering from losses you've experienced, recovering from additional expenses, things like that. Um, Kim, your, is that your understanding?
I actually was not at the meeting, so I didn't hear it. That was a meeting. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I'm thinking more of your discussion with Paul and the idea that he, you know, that uh, something would be done to prepare us and protect us, uh, to people in the library and the library itself against, you know, future issues.
Yeah, we can certainly. This, you know, the ongoing discussion with the town to see where it leads, and I agree, I think the way Paul will probably present things will be in a way that we would be able to perhaps um, you know, section off something that we could, we could say, well, this is related to that. But at this point, I think it's to be seen, yep. But absolutely, yes.
Because we all pay enough taxes, we should get something in return here. Because our grandchildren are gonna be paying for it all, so we may as well at least have, get something that they can say, gee, I helped grandpa, and keep the library going.
Jen, the towns, the town has whatever criteria or um, program requirements uh, for this money. So they know what, they know what, uh, in order to get these funds, what kind of objectives or um, proposals the town needs to make in order to get the money.
It sounds like they received what sounded like lengthy documentation around this, which they were reading.
Okay, I think it would make sense for us to either try to get a copy of it or just let someone tell us what the program is and we can get it so that we can just see what the criteria is. Because while they may find it daunting, we may be able to go through it and essentially help them through, through it. Instruction, whatever we want to pitch to them based upon the documentation. I wouldn't rely upon the town to convey the information no less accurately.
Okey dokey.
And in other words, I'm saying, if you can get me a citation, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Is there like, I'm willing to go through.
Okay, I'll see if they will share. Okay, so Ed, we had jumped over to fundraising. Is there anything else we want to talk about on strategic planning now that you're back before we circle back on the fundraising?
No, unfortunately, I don't know how much, I said you all heard, but I think most of it's, um, probably nothing more.
Okay. Um, on fundraising, so we got some ideas generated. Do we want to just try to schedule a fundraising committee meeting to sort of hammer out more of the details on a proposal for this stuff?
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay, good.
And if we're thinking about doing the end of June, we should do it probably within the next five or six days.
Okay, Scott, you'll send around the proposed time or something?
Do I have to? The answer to that is yes. Sure.
Okay. All right, so nominating committee.
End of the week, I'm really tired.
Uh, nominating committee, Rebecca sent a report around, um, and as Kim mentioned as well, so we're still striking out on the search for trustees. But we have the two possible new, new uh, leads to follow up on now. Um, the other thing in Rebecca's report was the friends update on trying to come up with a name and the description of the friends group. Um, so if people have had a chance to read that, if you have any feedback. Um, but I think we want to just try to be able to move forward with this so that we all have a way of talking to potential friends. We seem to have a lot more people interested in committing to be a friend than a trustee, but it might be a way to lure people in once we get our hooks in them, you know, get them to commit further.
I'm not gonna give friends much of what we do ourselves, and so then we don't have to share all this glorious power we have.
All right, so no comments on the description? Um, so her youth committee report, um, it's really mostly about camp. Um, she provided a lot of details. Um, since it was sent out, New York State sent out their guidelines for camps for this year. Um, so she has read that, digested it, sent it out to the rest of the committee. Um, honestly, there's not much that is really changed at this point from, from what we've had before and what the CDC guidelines were. Uh, because we're dealing with kids that, you know, vaccinations aren't really, um, I play at this point for the campers. Um, and it does sound like some of the things that are uh, reduced are some of the sanitizing requirements and perhaps being able to share materials more than we originally thought we might be able to. So um, the, that group is working on trying to figure out um things like the supplies and, and the um, how much sharing of stuff will be done and what will have to be done with that. So that's all underway. Um, and it, but it does definitely seem like the whole pod approach of having uh, limited groups of limited sizes that stick together and don't interact with the other groups is um, gonna be like kind of the most important thing overall at this point. So having the two additional tents that the town approved um, is gonna allow us to, to do that and be able to, you know, have kids there safely, even like when there's, you know, some, some rain, not, not big storms, but when there's some rain. And that should give us enough room for people to, for the kids to also be the required distance apart when they're eating uh, and uh, have their masks off. So I think uh, one of the things that's still being figured out is um, additional tables and chairs that might be needed to accommodate, again, the social distancing aspect of things. Um, and uh, the camp registrations are still coming in, the uh, counselor regist, uh, applications are coming in, so all of that is moving along. Did anybody have any questions about youth committing?
The only thing that I'm confused about with um, the CDC guidelines for camp is that it seems to say that you can, the kids cannot wear masks if they're doing activities. Um, but if they're gonna be close together, then they need to. So it's almost as if, you know, if they're in the tent and they should be wearing a mask, but if they're not and they're running around, then they don't need to wear a mask, but I think we need to be more clear on it, because I don't, I was, it didn't seem, it, it sounded a little um, confusing to me for camp, but um, the other thing to know is that summer food, um, they are gonna do a hybrid where, you know, you can do, we can do either, you know, having a parent pick up their food, um, taking, you know, taking it away, or you can do it, you know, giving it out at camp, so we can do both. Have meals ready for both situations. So, but we'll have the training on that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, great. Okay. Anything else on that?
I don't think so.
I don't think there's anything really on building and grounds at this point. I had a note that there's some open issues with the grounds committee around plantings. Jody wanted to do replacing some bushes, so we'll just have to follow up on that next time. Um, I would like to propose when we talk about committees next time, combining the two. Um, it feels like, especially moving forward, some of the stuff we're talking about, they're kind of related and might be better to just have one group that's in the loop of all of that. Um. Administrative committee, um, I think we need to regroup on that and have a meeting. There are, the policy stuff needs to get folded into that group, I believe. Um, and we have some outstanding items like the uh, director review form and input form that we just need to finalize at this point, so. Um, you know, having, there's been other higher priority items going on with everybody right now, but we can schedule that in the next month or two. Um, just get those things rolling. I think that's probably a good, good approach. Have anything else on that? All right, so next we were gonna be doing the board officers and the committee assignments. We'll defer that to next month. Any old business. There's no public for comment. New business, I was gonna talk about the American Rescue Funds, which we touched on um, a few minutes ago. So as we talked about, I'll try to see if I can get the actual guidelines from the town board to share with us. Um.
And we want to talk about girls, the Girl Scout stuff now, or do you want to do that later?
So I think we have to end this meeting and start the executive meeting, meeting, correct? Scott?
That sounds logical.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll, uh, can we, oh, we don't, well, we're not voting on anything, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna say we're gonna adjourn and we're gonna do it. Unless anyone has anything else to talk about. All right, so board meeting adjourned.
Eight thirty-four.
Meeting to begin.
That's a good length.